Five, four minutes after five, I'd like to call the planning board meeting of July eighteenth, twenty twenty quarter order. Here at the Rose Baker Center upstairs, it's a new and exciting environment. Staff and members first. I'm Ricky in the chair, Greg Katamatory, our planning director. We also have Alex, our new community development director. Jane Ramsen is joining us remote. I've got Henry McCarroll, Beverly Bookin, David Rosen, this is Eric, the senior planner now. And to my right, Doug Cook, Eric, Alex, and Greg.
Sean.
And Sean.
Oh, that's Sean. Sean's in the second row tonight. So I guess we're gonna have our new community development director, Eric Alex Koppelman, give a quick review and recommendation. How's that gonna work, Greg?
So according to the charter for the position of the community development director, the mayor appoints and the city council confirms, and the planning board also has a role in review and recommending candidates.
Okay.
So if you want to do a little background, I know he's met most of you at this point, but and then following that. Some recommendation.
All right, Flores here, sir.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. It's wonderful to be with you. I've had the opportunity to meet many of you already, and we're already busy at work. So just to tell you a little bit about myself, I've been a practicing planner for close to ten years, working different parts of the country. Most recently, I was working for the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, MAPC. So that's an agency that provides technical assistance to hundred one cities and towns in greater Boston. So I've had the opportunity to provide assistance with economic development, land use planning, and housing where I actually had a focus. So I have a lot of expertise in housing planning and policy that I hope can be of value to this process and others that we're pursuing here with the city. And I would really want to be able to take that perspective I have in working with a lot of different kind of communities and bring that here to Gloucester. Really excited to be able to step into this role. I think that this is an amazing community, has working people in it, has a lot of things that we can be working towards in terms of our housing needs, our economic development needs, working towards climate resiliency, all of these things. Gloucester's on the front lines of. So that's why I really was excited about the opportunity to work here, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Alex, what are your formal training, your education, so forth?
I have a bachelor's in history and political science and a master's degree in urban and community planning. And I've been an accredited planner with American Planning Association since twenty eighteen.
Did you have to relocate here or are you from the area already?
Sort of north shore. I'm in Lynn, so not too far away.
Beverly, you don't want to drill them on technical stuff?
Are you a member of AICP?
Yeah, yeah, I'm accredited and an APA member.
That's the American Institute of Certified Planners. It's like being a CPA.
Which which cities in particular have you had experience in, or is it all of the ones that were, I mean, that's a lot of places?
Yeah, many of them, but I guess ones in the north shore, I worked on inclusionary zoning with the city of Salem, helped them develop that policy and get it passed. I've worked on an economic development plan in Topsfield as well as Essex. And I did a housing production plan for the town of Marblehead.
I was gonna say, you're coming in with two studies in progress, which were pretty much relevant to the stuff that we're doing here. Have you had an opportunity to review the progress on those two studies?
Yeah, I've jumped right in. Obviously, we're looking at three A here tonight. But I've also been working side with Greg and others in the department on the comprehensive planning process. We're working through the recommendations for that and gonna be gathering input on that through some technical working sessions coming up in the fall. So yeah, I think it's a great time to come in to be a part of that vision building for the future of the city because that's really what the community development department's all about.
And have you worked in other states?
Yes, Ohio and Kentucky.
You're happy to be here.
Yeah.
You see? Do you have any questions for Eric?
Me? No. Eric's been great in all my dealings with him so far. Very glad to have him on board.
We need to take a formal recommendation on this.
You said.
I'll be happy to. Jane, you want to do that call?
Sure. I move that we recommend Alex Koppelman for community development director.
A second. You have a motion in a second? I guess we'll do a roll call vote.
Member Noonan?
Yes.
Member Ramsen?
Yes.
And Carl?
Yes.
Member Bookin?
Yes.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
Or Henry?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
You're out of my line of sight. Okay, unanimous.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard. Now, you really got the job. Do we want to dispose of this A and R first?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay, so next on the agenda this evening is an A and R site plan reviews and preliminary subdivision plans. So approval not required plans have been by Alan Brocken. Sorry, I'm gonna brutalize your name. Brockenbro.
Postenoff.
Okay. To divide property at twenty-three Calder Street Assessor's Map seventy-five, lot twenty. Slide for that one, Greg.
It started sharing.
Aaron's caring.
You got a picture of the map upgrade?
I'm getting it.
Oh, okay.
So if you wanna, sorry, yeah.
Should I say?
Yeah, yeah, just kick it off.
This is the property here that's being.
You had to introduce yourself for the record address for the.
I'm Alan Brockenbro. I live fifteen Calder Street. And this property is twenty-three Calder Street, I mean, two lots down. The property is being divided into three pieces. It's those three stacked properties you can see there. The whole property is three point seven five acres, and then these three lots would be one acre, one acre, and that top one is one point seven five acres. Basically, the plan.
And the required frontage is sufficient?
Yeah, it's eighty, eighty, and then the top one's a hundred and five. It's R twenty.
Here, this is the hundred and five frontage here. This is sixty. And here, another twenty, so that meets the frontage requirement. And this lot three down here is also eighty feet. Calder Street is a public way, so it has frontage on the way.
Is sewer and water available?
I think so, because it's on the Calder Street coming down that way.
And is it Hiller Road, Hillier Road? Is that private or public?
It's in Eastman.
It's private.
It's private, and it's a, but it's mapped?
It is, it is. I'm not sure of how long it's been around, but the frontage that's being derived for all the lots is coming from Calder Street.
So it's moved, just kind of an external, just an internal driveway?
Yeah, there's also water service. There's actually a hydrant at the corner of lot three at the bottom of the page. So will the access for lot one come off of Hilliard or off of Calder? Off of Calmey. Same for the other two lots? Yeah, definitely, the other two.
You have other questions for the applicant? Jan, do you have a motion?
I do. I move that we approve the approval not required plan submitted by Alan Brockenbro to divide property at twenty-three Calder Street.
Motion, I need a second.
Second.
Give that to Sean closer to me. Roll call vote, please.
Member Noonan?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Member McCarroll?
Yes.
Member Bookin?
Yes.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
Member Henry?
Yes.
And member Ramsen?
Yes.
Thank you very much. So let's just do this continuation. Next on the agenda is a major project review in accordance with the G. So in accordance with the GCO five point seven point four, the Gloucester Planning Board reviewed those major projects submitted by twenty Main LLC for a twenty-four residential unit mixed use project to be located at twenty Main Street Assessor's Map, seven lot ninety-four, presented by attorney Deb Ellison, the request of the attorney and the applicant. They'd like to continue to our August fifteenth meeting of twenty twenty-four. Need a motion to continue that?
Yep, I move that we continue the major projects submitted by twenty Main LLC for a mixed use project located at twenty Main Street to our scheduled meeting of August fifteen, twenty twenty-four.
Motion, I need a second. Sean, thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Member Noonan?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Member Henry?
Yes.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
Member Bookin?
Yes.
Member Carl?
Yes.
And member Ramsen?
Yes.
We're mixing it up today.
Yeah, you like that?
We want to dive in, get rid of the minutes, or do you want to get right into?
We can get into discussion at same time.
So next on our other business is discussion of forty A, three A, MBTA, community zoning scenarios.
I'm gonna share my screen. So this evening, we also have Eric Halverson from RKG. And so I'm gonna kind of walk through a little bit of where we've been since the last time the planning board met. Because there've been several subcommittee meetings of planning board subcommittee, as well as a meeting with P and D, and kind of where we are kind of to date with the scenario development. So for this presentation, I'll just go through the project timeline, which we are on timeline to the action plan that we developed two years ago, which is surprising. I'll talk a little bit about the subcommittee and P and D key takeaway takeaways from the two meetings that they held on July second and July ninth. And Jane can, as the chair of the subcommittee, she can chime in for accuracy, consistency. It's been a little bit reworked, but you know, taking those considerations into scenario development. And then I'll kind of have a little bit of a discussion about some of the ideas that came out of that and why they may or may not work with the three A framework. All of this is really reliant on being able to put your ideas into a model that the state developed. And it's, it's, we all know that there's a lot of different possibilities, but the the model is fairly rigid in terms of its its outputs, and we have those two specific metrics of capacity and minimum density that we have to satisfy as long, as well as starting with a three family and up for consideration of multifamily. Then we'll talk a little bit about some other ideas that were raised and maybe some alternative scenarios of how to achieve some potential new zoning in those areas to meet local housing goals, and then talk about timeline and next steps. So this is the same timeline that's been up on the city website since we submitted the action plan more than a year ago. Over the course of the spring and and just about to date, maybe we're a couple of weeks beyond, was anticipated that it would be the work of the planning board with the support of our consultants to develop scenarios. And we're moving into phase five, that's really kind of getting it to the point of of a proposal for the city council to consider and conducting public hearings around a specific proposal. Out of the subcommittee meeting and P and D meeting, so there were two, one of the subcommittee and then one of the joint meeting with P and D. There were several ideas that were raised. One is, we all know that the R five district is going to be a part of any compliance scenario. There were some, you know, there's, there's been a lot of discussion about whether it could be a portion of the R five, the entire R five. And we've heard, we've heard ideas around around both of those scenarios. We also know that the R five, if it's included, the capacity number is very large. And again, the state has a certain compliance capacity. And if we're gonna have a scenario, we should start with a discussion that kind of gets to that compliance. Then we can also talk about zoning areas beyond if we choose to. So one of the things that came out of that was can we refine one based on thinking about the actual area around the station area where the areas might be more advantageous than others? We're locating districts, also being aware of the constraints. We know we have a lot of nonconformity. When you have nonconforming lots and you zone for it, it reduces the overall density of the district, kind of rubs up against the requirements of the minimum density standard that the state has provided. There's also other constraints. You know, we know that there's excluded areas. Those also kind of discount the density. And again, really focusing back on three A requirements. No decisions have to be made this evening, but again, we're hearing a lot of different ideas and approaches to this. Some that are thinking, you know, we should zone less area of the R five, consider other areas in the community, and also potentially higher density districts.
What is the meaning of walk shed?
So really, folks, sorry, I should clarify that. So really thinking about the station area, I think this is kind of when we talk about the spirit and the letter, the principle around, you know, locating housing near amenities and particular transit. So there's, there's ways of looking at the street network and the pedestrian network to, you know, what's a reasonable distance to be located to use the transit, also use amenities. And you typically look at five to ten minute walk sheds where someone could walk from their home to either transit or other amenities.
Is that a new term, Greg?
I don't think so. No, no, it's, it's, it's used fairly regularly. It's just, it's just like your commute time.
I was gonna say, it must be very jargony because I've been on two planning boards and I've never heard a word before.
Okay. Then we, you know, at the last planning board meeting, I think we started talking about looking at the other station area in West Gloucester. We know that area is zoned R twenty, and so there are, and there's a lot of exclusion in that area. But a preliminary idea was presented, and and the outcome of the meeting was to kind of refine that further to look at what the possibility would be for West Gloucester District. Then I've kind of lumped three through six, which are really higher density districts, and also a lot of consideration of potentially mandatory mixed use districts. So one thing that I think has been talked about at several meetings is, is, is there a way to kind of leverage the three A process to potentially support the considerations of the housing authority and its potential reinvestment in its properties? Some of the caveats were that potentially requires an economic feasibility analysis, but that's something that we may need to do one way or another. The Railroad Avenue area, also, there was discussion about creating a mandatory mixed use district. A lot of the expressed concern in the, in those two meetings was around shaws. I mean, that's, that's a key consideration. It's difficult to zone for one particular use. It's also difficult to try to preserve a use potentially through zoning when you have all these other options. So we'll talk about that a little bit further. Eastern Avenue Shaw's was also brought up. It was brought up and identified, I think, probably in maybe one of the mapping exercises. We certainly haven't had outreach from the property owner or anyone that's considered that in the past for, for potential redevelopment for housing. Also has some of the same considerations as, you know, it has a lot of commercial activity in that area. We certainly don't want to displace that either. And then the Lexington Avenue area, again, what type of zoning might work in that area? Whether it's mixed used, I think there's certainly been the, you know, the hope of revitalization of that commercial district as well as potentially layering and housing. And I think the next slide is basically, I think, some of the, some of the feedback that we've, we've heard. I'll just get right to it. Particularly with, with the way the state has set up the guidelines for mixed use options. There, there's a lot of things you can and can't do. One of the things that I think is, is really an important part of the discussion is you cannot zone for parking. You can't have parking requirements in these districts, which I think depending upon where you are in a more urban environment that maybe has parking garages, on-street parking. There's a good stretch along Railroad Avenue, for instance, that has, has no frontage for parking. So it's, it's a little, it's pretty challenging to kind of come up with something when that's an aspect that you cannot zone for. You cannot create parking minimums for a commercial aspect of a mandatory mixed use district. The other thing that we've been hearing from some of our, our other, other communities that are in the MBTA community classification is a lot of the economic feasibility analysis require that mandatory mixed use districts might have the requirement of four or five story buildings. And again, this is all in the context of and has a right discussion. So that's, that's a real strong consider, consideration to think about. And again, I think there's, there's a lot of merit to looking at these areas in particular for potential housing. They are literally right next to the train station, if you can deal with noise and, and addressing those types of concerns. But there may be other tools that might be more appropriate, and we had some discussion about potential forty R smart growth districts. These are ways that not only can you facilitate housing, it always works best if you have a property owner that's engaged, but also that the state partners and provides funding for units that are constructed as well as potential tuition reimbursement for school age children that are within the defined district. So that's certainly something potentially to explore. We also put on locally developed mixed use districts. Again, there might be something that's more, you know, slightly different, different approach maybe for areas like the Lexington area, Lexington Ave area and others that really maybe just don't fit very well into the guidelines of the three A law and requirements.
Hey, Greg, before you move on, can you just define mandatory mixed use? Because I know we probably on the planning board all know what that means, but for anyone listening here, any citizens might not understand what that is.
Sure. So, you know, our main street is very much a mixed use district with, with first floor level of, of active use, whether that's public uses or commercial uses or retail uses with housing above. And in the context of the three A guidelines, there are very specific requirements about how you can create a mixed use district. And in a lot of ways, when they look at this economic feasibility aspect of any district that you create, they are looking very closely at what you require for parking. They're looking at what your height limitations are. They have a certain idea about the area for a potential unit. You know, you can't say, you know, you can't create fifty square foot housing units. They have to have a minimum of about a thousand square feet that they're thinking about. And on top of that, if you start requiring commercial use on the first floor, they also look very closely at how that relates to the, the financing of, of a potential development. So the, the more you include these types of things, the more they typically will say that your, your, your zoning will have to allow for increased density.
Right. So can I just add that the, the, the other option is optional mixed use, meaning you don't require retail on the first floor? But then that puts the commercial businesses that we have now, including the Shaw's by Railroad Ave, at risk of being developed into housing instead of staying as commercial properties. So that's why we're looking at mandatory mixed use to protect those commercial businesses. And yet mandatory mixed use is not a good fit with three A, as we've discovered, right?
Agreed.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, thank you.
And if you're trying to get, if the purpose of the whole thing is get people to use the public transportation, the Eastern Avenue would not be particularly hot. It's a fair, fair hike from there over, over to the company. Not that I'm trying to say one thing or another.
Yeah.
I live out there. I would have no problem, but I don't see any place you could put housing in there. You know, I mean, there, there, there is housing down near the Shaw's downtown. And in fact, we've got multi-story housing in that area based on old industrial uses.
And Hank, to that point, one of the issues around the Eastern Ave Shaw's is that it probably wouldn't qualify for the state regulations because it's not close to transit and other infrastructures.
Thank you. So that was really kind of grouping those, those three potential mixed use districts together. And then I kind of called out the housing authority in general as a, as a potential. Again, I think we've talked about this in the past. You know, the, when this kind of first came out, and there's been a lot of concern raised about, you know, this not being about affordable housing, we do have the opportunity to potentially make some of this about affordable housing to partner with Housing Authority. I've had some initial discussions with, with David Holden from the Housing Authority. They are looking at their sites for potential reinvestment. So I think it creates a really, really interesting opportunity to, to tab a portion of that capacity that we're required to have to be directed toward potential Housing Authority sites. In particular, the one closest to the train station on Maplewood Ave. I will have further discussions with, with, with David. He's on vacation this week. We have been talking, but it is something that I think you'll see when Eric does a presentation that it's something that we would like to include in this effort. It'll take a little bit more work to refine it, but I think it's, it's definitely something that's worth considering in the, in the scenario development. So putting it all together from everything that, yes, ma'am?
That's a question. So early on, we talked about the Halyard overlay.
Yep.
And the Halyard overlay would merely allow us to.
You're stealing thunder.
What?
We're stealing thunder.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Could I break down?
Well, it's not overt, but, but we're getting there.
All right, thank you.
So at this point, we, we've kind of taken everything that we've heard. We've taken everything from the two subcommittee meetings. And we've, we've kind of did a kind of debrief to RKG. And we've kind of come up with a scenario for your consideration that I think it checks a lot of the boxes. We know that there is never going to be a scenario that's going to get everybody on the same page to say, I think this is what you should do. So I think what they've come up with has a bit of everything. And not discounting that, a lot of things have been identified through this process. If the one benefit that, that we say comes out of this is it really identified areas where we can really have some focus, have a lot of robust discussions about, you know, what the community benefit could be of rezoning some of these areas, potentially leverage state funding, particularly in the, in the forty R case. But, but I think it also has, has shown the limitations of the modeling, the limitations of the guidelines. In some, in some instances, you could create more potential, but still not meet the minimum requirements of, of the guidelines. So I think what we've come up with is something that takes that into consideration. New term for Hank, walk shed, really thinks about if we're gonna locate areas in the downtown area and not do the entire R five district. Because in some areas, you, you extend the zoning, and there's really is no potential benefit for areas that have a lot of undersized lots. So try to focus on, again, meeting that capacity requirement in a footprint that makes sense, proximate to transit and other amenities. So that's really the downtown station area refinement. Then considering West Gloucester Station in the mix, I think that was something we heard very loud and clear. Why aren't you considering the other station area? It does have a lot of constraint, but we showed a draft district at one of the past meetings that there is something to be considered there. Not a lot of capacity, but becomes a part of the scenario. Again, trying to partner with the Housing Authority on, on a higher density district just because of, of what's required, what they already have on the ground, as well as the need to expand it slightly because we have that minimum requirement of any district we create has to be at least five acres. And their site is not, so it would have to be a little bit larger. And then also, we've, you know, heard specifically about, you know, trying to create districts that would trigger inclusionary housing, our, our affordable housing requirements. And again, as Beverly got right to it, there is potentially an opportunity to create a zoning for a site that we've already looked at the capacity analysis of, has a permit for eighty to a hundred units. And so that's something to consider. You know, we could potentially facilitate housing on a site that's, that's already kind of been vetted in terms of its capacity. And again, at the end of the day, we have to meet density and capacity standards. From that point, I'll turn it over to Eric to walk through where we. I from that point, I'll turn it over to Eric to walk through where we are in terms of a scenario.
So is Magnolia out at this point?
At this point, it's not included in in it, and again, some of that. And Eric can kind of get into this. Grabbing more areas sometimes affects that minimum density requirement. So unless unless you're at a high density, higher density district than maybe some area you already have. It doesn't, it doesn't help with kind of the bottom line in in some of these compliance. And also whether or not not that that's something that you might want to consider a mixed use district for.
Well, we've got, we've got a couple of affordable housing projects. That have been recent, the one where Cameron's restaurant used to be. That was a, that's an affordable. Residences above metro property. And the YMCA. Forty four, forty four units, which as I understand has got. Ten times as many people as we have spaces for. So we know that there's a demand for the tremendous demand for. Didn't take long to fill up the Cameron's project.
No.
And it's not going to take long to fill up the one YMCA either, so.
So with that, I'll turn it over to Eric.
So it's. Sort of thinking all the way back to when I first talked to the planning board many months ago, and also at our first public meeting, I'd said. Even though three A has requirements and sort of restrictions that we have to follow, there is a lot of flexibility in the law. Particularly when it comes to where we place districts. To try and best address community goals and and the goals of of boards and the administration, and also in in the zoning itself. And going through this process, I think we've heard a lot of suggestions. Some suggestions which are reflected in this scenario, I think are ones that we've heard kind of over and over again. Over the last few weeks, myself, my colleague Allison, who I think you all have met. I've been working really hard with staff to try to figure out. How do we take the priorities that we've heard so far that Greg has done a lot of the work for me in outlining those priority sites? And try to get them into some kind of a scenario for three A to present you with tonight that tries to balance all those different things. The first map that you see on the screen is this term walk shed. Really what that means is we place a point on the Gloucester Downtown Station and we say. How many, how far can you get in a five minute walk, you know, typical person walking a typical speed? How far can you get in five minutes, that's kind of that really light pink just in the center there? And then the darker pink purple on the outside is how far could you get in a ten minute walk? The reason that we did this by the suggestion of staff was to say. This is where a lot of our amenities are, we also have public transportation, we have the downtown and the waterfront, a lot of things that people who. Live and visit here want to be able to walk to, so. What if we took the R five district recognizing? I think what we all heard was, let's not do the whole thing, let's try to figure out what makes sense to do in the R five. So one way we thought about leveraging the spirit of the law was trying to get some of that housing located within a five to ten minute walk of the station, so. That's why we wanted to show this map first before we actually show the R five. Districts that we would like to present to you tonight as part of our scenario.
And what's purple on the map?
Of that, the ten minute walk shed is that darker purple. And then it's a little faded out, but sort of in the center of that donut is supposed to be a lighter pink color, which is a five minute walk from the station. Okay. And going through this, and I know we've talked. At large extents about the composition of the R five from a sort of physical development as well as a parcel standpoint. There are a lot of parcels that fall underneath five thousand square feet, they're smaller than five thousand square feet. There's also a lot of parcels that are sort of between five and four thousand square feet and five thousand and then under four thousand, so. This map, we just wanted to sort of highlight, as we're trying to figure out where to place districts. We're really trying hard to find as many parcels that are contiguous to each other or next to each other. That are going to be, you know, either hopefully over five thousand. And as we started to do that. It was getting harder and harder to balance the R five. The unit capacity requirements that we have, the density requirements that we have to meet and balance that with a West Gloucester, which is much lower density. And balance that with some of these other sub-districts that we've been talking about. So we wanted to just show you a map that illustrates where we do have parcels that are over five thousand square feet, those are all that are shown that kind of off yellow color. Parcels between four and five thousand, which are kind of that darker blue to purplish color. And then parcels that are under four thousand square feet in that lighter blue color. And those are just illustrating what's in the R five district, not the other zoning districts that kind of interweave throughout R five. But just to give you an idea of trying to pick some of these areas. Became more and more difficult as we started looking, so we started to expand. Our view to say, okay, what if we took things that are between four and five thousand, does that help us get any closer? To balancing the different goals that the community has set that they want to try and balance. Just the last thing I wanted to mention on this too, it's not just about contiguity. But as I think I mentioned in a previous meeting, it's also about getting one contiguous district that's large enough in size. That can be fifty percent of all the all the three A districts that we have. When we add it together, so we do need quite a large district, and we also know this, a big district has to be located. Within a half mile of the station, so there's just a thousand different things that we're trying to balance here, so hopefully that's reflected tonight in this proposal.
I noticed you, there's a marker on something called Town Hall. I believe City Hall would be a better way to talk about that, it's been a long time since we were at Town Hall.
Yeah, I think that's just a layer from the state, they call them all Town Halls, yeah, but yes, you're right, City Hall.
Just just to be accurate.
For sure, yeah. So this map just starts to look in a little bit closer as we start to balance all those goals and. The challenges that we have within our five and the size of the parcels and trying to get the unit capacity up. We started to look with staff at what would happen if we went from a five thousand square foot minimum and started looking at a four thousand square foot minimum and above. So now what you see is all the parcels at four thousand square feet and over in that kind of off yellow color. And then compare that to the parcels that are undersized at under four thousand square feet in that darker blue purple. You can see how now it gets a little bit easier as we start to just lower that threshold a little bit to get the contiguity. Bring more parcels into conformance, which helps us gain more unit capacity in the R five and bring that density up as well. So we're trying to sort of balance all those things again in the R five. Okay, so now as we start to look at potential drawn districts. Just in and around the downtown half mile station area before we talk about West Gloucester. Here are four potential districts that we'd like to to share with you for your consideration. First district is what we're calling the Centennial Avenue Madison District. We've shown you this district before, maybe in a slightly different configuration, but that's what's outlined in the green. Where I think Greg's been putting his cursor over, so kind of. North and then running kind of south and then to the southwest. The one thing I'll note about this district in particular is this is where some of the floodplain starts to creep in, that's that blue hatched area. You can see there's a little tail coming in. We know it's very important, and we've heard this from you all and from the public, to avoid floodplain areas pretty much at all costs. So we've done that, we've cut the Centennial Madison area so that it does not include any parcels that are at least currently mapped as part of the floodplain flood zone. Moving, I guess, to the right now, we have a smaller district called the Chestnut Street District in yellow. In order to gain some additional density and some additional unit capacity in the R five. We needed to create kind of, I think it's about a fifteen acre-ish sub-district there. We picked that one because it's both within the walk shed. It avoids historic districts, it avoids the floodplain. And it gets us a fair amount of parcels that are over four thousand square feet. So we don't have as much non-conformity in that district as we do in other parts of the R five. And then two districts that I know we've talked about in the past. One is the Maplewood District, so this will be what Greg was talking about around Housing Authority property. So how can we leverage Housing Authority property and think about giving them some additional options for different housing typologies? Also recognizing what we've heard from the public about the importance of affordable housing and over time trying to get more. Deed restricted, specifically deed restricted affordable housing in Gloucester. Also putting it in extremely close proximity to amenities and the transit station. Then a district that we have talked about before, which we've commonly referred to in the past as kind of the Halyard District. Placing a district over both the existing development that is the Halyard. It does a couple of things, it gets us. Density where density already exists and it gets us units where units already exist. That really helps us balance out the R five and West Gloucester with some higher density districts. At the suggestion of staff, we've brought in the idea of capturing that two acre parcel, it's just to the right of the Halyard. Which technically is part of the Gloucester Crossing parcel. But what we'd like to ask of the state is, would they let us create kind of a. I'll call like a dummy parcel or a kind of a fake parcel just for modeling purposes. Where we could model that as part of the Halyard District. And then we'd be able to capture that two acres. That density and that unit so we could both leverage the Halyard, but also open up an opportunity for new multifamily development. Which if we apply the inclusionary regulations to that, it would trigger, because we're over the units that would trigger inclusionary. So now we're again trying to get more deed restricted affordable housing. Just barely outside the half mile, but it's it's close, you know, fifteen ish minute walk. So that's the idea with that district as well. So from a downtown perspective and the downtown stations, our proposal sits right now with these four districts.
Does that work with because of the special permit? Or creating that whole development up there? Does that have to be amended, how does that work?
So it's adding an additional use. So you know, it's when someone's issued a permit, it's up to them to elect to either utilize that permit or not. If we're providing a new potential use, that's something that they would be able to pursue. But I'm sure obviously it's it's a longer conversation and consideration whether that that's something that they would like to pursue. But it would certainly create the option.
Eric, can I ask you a question? I assume you showed us the previous slide with the walk shed and everything. But mostly to indicate why, for example, Cleveland Street, Prospect Street, Addison Street. Cannot qualify, so are you basically saying that? Pink area in the middle of the donut isn't going to work because unless you include four thousand square foot lots or. It just isn't going to work because there aren't enough contiguous slots, I'm not sure why. The R five looked like a great map with with the with the donut with a ten minute walk shed, but and yet we're looking at this green. Area all around Centennial Ave, and second question, just so I can get the both in. Are the darker areas inside Centennial Ave non-compliant lots or four thousand square foot lots and same for the Prospect Street area?
I'll take that question because it's the simplest first, the darker parcels within Prospect. And Centennial are the non-conforming parcels that would be under four thousand square feet. Terms of the five minute walk shed versus the ten minute walk shed, great question. Within the five minute walk shed, which is the tightest area, you know, that Prospect, Cleveland Street, Railroad Ave, like those areas that. Are not currently part of our district proposal, there are a lot more undersized lots there, so under four thousand square feet. Many of them are in the three thousand to thirty five hundred square foot range. So we really wanted to try to look at four thousand square feet and see how close we could get, and we do, we get there with four thousand. So that's the reason why these districts that are a little bit further from the the five minute walk shed were selected.
It seems almost like it's not helpful to show the five and ten minute walk shed, I mean, it's great information for me to have right now. But if but if we're not going to be using that as a criteria, we shouldn't show it again.
Going going off Jane's question. I don't see, oh, I'm having a hard time seeing the the value of. Picking and choosing districts and having to lower our. Current five thousand minimum square footage down to four thousand in order to make up the numbers versus just doing a broad based. Three family by right in all of our five, which my recollection from your computations before. But this way over the necessary capacity numbers, I I think doing this. That's up the situation we're trying to address in our, the zoning amendment exercises earlier. Of treating, which state law requires, treating all uses similarly within a district and. Which we would be treating everything similarly within the district if we just blanket change to R five, making three family by right. As long as you're conforming with our current three family, with our current R five district standards. By doing this, we're telling somebody in one of those dark spaces that's currently on a non-conforming. Less than five thousand square foot lot. That they have the thumbs up to build the by right three family unit. Whereas the guy or gal over on Prospect Street, which might have a six thousand square foot lot. Can't, they have to go through the ZBA process in order to do a three family, the same three family. That their neighbor over on Beacon Street on an undersized lot can do by right with this. My feeling is that. Now, I I think it's a great exercise to actually look at this stuff, but the the simpler approach would just to be, say. Three family by right on conforming lots in R five. And I don't see the currency or the the value in doing anything less than that. It just, it creates conflicts where conflicts don't currently exist and creates conflicts that we've said in the past. We, and the state law says you should avoid.
Can we go back and look at that slide that shows the four thousand, five thousand square foot lots? Okay, so the. The yellow is.
Yellow is over four thousand and the dark blue is under four thousand.
Correct.
And so. I guess, yeah, so why is Prospect Eric not a good? Fit, if if that's what you're suggesting?
Well, we we took a part of, we took the part of Prospect. Greg can just go to the next map, see, we do have that. Part of Prospect that's east of Pleasant Street. But the back again, the part of Prospect that's west of Pleasant Street just has more blue, if you will, non-conformity. So we're just trying really hard to try and. Capture as many conforming lots that would be in this case over four thousand square feet as we could. Because the more non-conformity we have. The more public right of way that we have to include, it just has a negative impact on the density numbers.
Okay. Is it accurate to say that even if that area was included? The blue parcels would not be eligible to utilize the three A zoning, so we're avoiding areas. Where they wouldn't be eligible because they wouldn't have the minimum lot size to be able to use.
But all the additional yellow would. Yes, include in that capacity, and and again, my recollection from your earlier projections is that. That gives us the numbers and it is a much easier exercise, a much more equitable exercise. That everyone who currently exists in in the R five district. Otherwise, where again, we're saying that if you live over off Washington Street on a four thousand square foot lot. You can build a three family by right, even though you are. Below the our historic requirements for. Our for the R five district that you're located in, whereas we're telling again, the person. Or people who own, again, that. Those eight lots off of Pleasant. Or off of Prospect before you get to put in, that even though you are conforming. You still have to go through the ZBA process to do exactly what we're allowing your currently non-conforming neighbor to do. And I I just don't think that's an equitable way to do it, I think the only reason that. We're trying to pick parcels is to. Manage the the capacity number, the theoretical capacity, which we know. Isn't the true capacity, it's.
But the thing with what you're getting at is is that we have two options. And then the one that you're going with here, the full R five is simple. You know, we we can do that easily. This required more work and analysis, but it's another option that we're considering, basing it on principles of. Walk shed, avoiding floodplanes, avoiding the historic district. And kind of doing the pre-work of saying, okay, here's where a lot of the non-conforming parcels are, so even if they were within the zoning district. They would still be told you can't build the three family by right because your lot's non-conforming.
Right, but the person who we're not including with the other map. That is on a conforming lot would be told you still have to go through the ZBA process because we just haven't had to pick your street to to include it.
Sean, I I totally get what you're saying, but Eric and. Well, Eric. Tell me there's a mathematical reason why you need to exclude that other part of Prospect Street, or for example. Truss Street and Dodge Street that looks like it has plenty of conforming four thousand and up square foot lots, is it, so, yeah, exactly. Um. Go ahead.
All right. Didn't mean to cut you off.
Nope.
Um, so I guess uh two things. Uh, one. From the mathematical exercise piece. From the more public right of way that we bring into the districts, we cannot count that. That counts against us from a density perspective. And then the more undersized lots, that also counts against us from a density perspective. So. When we're doing this exercise, it really comes down to just balancing and just continuing to remodel. And look at the numbers and just trying to come up with something that hits the numbers. One thing I remember, just wanted to remind folks from prior conversations and public meetings too, is. Heard a lot about not quote unquote, and this isn't my perspective, but what we heard. Not quote unquote, putting everything in the downtown and burdening the downtown. I believe we also heard some P and D members or city councillors also express that in the early stages. So some of what we tried to do too is reflect that by trimming the R five down a little bit. Trying not to place everything in the R five and spread it out as much as we could while again trying to balance the mathematical equations.
So then why didn't you do more of a ten minute walk shed than uh heavy on the Centennial Ave side?
It's all in the, most of it is in the ten minute walk shed, Jane, unless I'm.
You go to the question. It's kind of it's kind of skewed to the to the west. And then when you looked, when you look to the east, you got Burnham's Field. And then there's also the contiguous nature aspect of it. You would have to, you know, kind of. You'd have to do it through kind of narrow sections. Again. Then it starts to go back to the discussion about what what's the capacity? We've heard some people say you should be hitting the capacity, other people saying do the entire district. And and that's, you know, this approach was, what does it look like if you hit it? Based on some of these other aspects and that Eric has already outlined. Um, you know, we can try to, we can certainly ask them to try to do some other iterations.
So in each of these scenarios, you've you've hit the number. Is that what you're demonstrating?
Yes.
Well, let me.
Each of the three scenarios.
So let me let me let me clarify. It's a really important point. So we have to look at it in totality.
Yep.
So it's these four districts plus, we haven't talked about West Gloucester yet, plus West Gloucester. We combine them all. We exceed the unit capacity, all the acreage requirements, and we just hit the density.
Yeah, I think maybe we should go through the rest of it and then return just so we can see the full picture.
Let me just ask a two questions. So we're looking at, this is a combination of the light green. Semi circle. The yellow. The pink and the purple.
Yeah, correct.
All right. And that's the combined, that is. For this area because we have some other. Okay, that's number one. Technical question. If you put an overlay, I I would assume you put an overlay on the art. Well, let me ask. It seems to me the easiest way to bring those four thousand square foot lots in. Is an overlay in the R five that makes a nonconforming lot of four thousand or more created before. The, you know, the ordinance was changed. It allows them to be developed, right? Or do you create a new zoning R four?
No, that's what we're talking about. It's an overlay that with these minimum requirements, you can do a three family.
Yeah, what we're doing.
So you're essentially making a four thousand square foot lot, a legally buildable lot. Even though the basic R five requires a minimum lot size of five thousand. Okay, but it's like an overlay because in other areas of R five, a minimum of five thousand square feet is.
What this does is create more lots that are eligible to utilize.
Oh, I understand. I understand. I'm looking at the mechanism. And by the way. If I'm in the non part of R five that doesn't get to be in the overlay. And I have a four thousand square foot lot that is nonconforming but preexisting, I can still develop it, can I? Or does it have to be five thousand?
It would be by variance.
Oh, by variance, that's right. So you'd have to go through variance because then you'd have to show setbacks and scale. Okay, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
And corollary to that is four thousand lots, square foot lots couldn't be created, not that there's any space in there, but. You can you can still only create five thousand square foot lots. You can't create a new four thousand square foot.
Right. These are preexisting, right? They're nonconforming, preexisting.
Right. But from a realistic perspective, again, without drilling down into all the information. Lots nonconforming and actually knowing, walking around downtown, we know that. The vast majority of existing buildings are nonconforming. So the. Actual reality of any of those four thousand square foot lots. Redeveloping and meeting the. Requirements that we're proposing with this, which is double our current parking requirements. I think everything Erica's model has been based on. Two parking sp- two off-street parking spaces per unit. So that's. Six cars you have to park. On a four thousand square foot lot with a three family house. I I think that the the. Reality of any of that happening. Is again, to use my favorite word in Beverly, de minimis, de minimis. That is, it ain't happening.
But the other thing is, is that I think six is on the high side because I think that. A lot of the minimum parking ratios are too high and I would say. Five would make more sense to me than six. I mean, six parking spaces on a fourth and a square foot lot. I mean, it's all parking lot.
Yeah, we're we're gonna have to talk about parking. We're gonna have to talk about a lot of these things. It's a great thing, Sean.
Yeah.
But let's try hone in on where we want to go, focus on those options, so then we can get into those detailed discussions.
Okay, so just looking at um. Those four districts that we were just showing and talking about before Centennial, Chestnut, Maplewood and Halyard. Um, similar to what we had done in a previous meeting, I think in the last public meeting, we just wanted to give a sense of. How many existing residential units are there today? How many units does the MBTA model say? There's capacity for, again, not the reality of the situation, but capacity for. Um, and then how many uh potential new units um could there be? The way that we calculated the potential new units is kind of a couple of different categories. Um, on conforming, on what would be considered conforming four thousand square foot lots if the zoning were to be changed that way. Um, looking just at four thousand, four thousand square foot lots and over. How many uh single family units are there today that could go to three family? Any two family structures are there today that could go to three family? Um, and then anything that's um. A three family, uh that could be a three family. So the real potential for new units there is about seven hundred and nine in Centennial. Seventy-one in Chestnut, ninety-five in Maplewood and sixty-five in in Halyard. Um, of course, if we got the approval to add that two acre um. Piece to what we refer to as the Halyard District. So in total, even though the modeled unit capacity is two thousand three hundred and forty-four. In reality, there's the potential for just under a thousand units. And again, because we've talked about before. Does someone even want to do that? How long would it take for those units to even build out, right? There's a lot of other decisions outside of just we change the zoning. That. Trigger someone to do something or to not do something. So but we just wanted to show. That, you know, kind of the potential for new units is a lot less than the model.
Did you do this same analysis for the other scenarios you showed us? As well?
In the past or?
In this, in this, as part of this presentation. Because that gets us what? Forty-five percent of what we need?
No, the twenty-three gets you over forty-four is just over.
Yeah, so we want to.
Twenty-two seventy.
Okay, because, okay.
So this actually puts us um over the twenty-two seventy from a MBTA modeling standpoint.
I don't mean, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time following logic. How do you get to the potential? It certainly isn't.
Yeah, it has nothing to do with the other two comps.
I know, and that is a little bit.
Yeah.
Disconcerting in the sense that I'm looking at it like somebody sitting in the audience looks at it and I'm trying to figure out how you got there. Um, and so I don't know, potential new units. There has to be some way to. I don't know. It just doesn't.
We have tables for that.
All right.
But it's it's, I think, one of the things that that was. This was Jane's suggestion. Um. She said it would be helpful to understand what's there on the ground in each one of these districts. What what the modeled district would provide. But then. What what isn't shown is as the zoning is applied to that district. RKG took a look at. What's on the ground right now for single, two and three family and looked at the potential of converting a single. To a three, two to a three, and if there was any potential new three family on a on a beacon.
And that's where you get that.
And that is what that number is. So in each of those districts, it's it's, let's do everything everywhere all at once. If everything, if everything complies, everything can can work out on each individual lot in the district. Other than if it's less than that minimum threshold, that's what the potential.
All I know is that the presentation is confusing. And uh the modeled units are the paper units if the whole area redeveloped to its maximal.
I've heard this.
It was all wiped out and built over again.
Yes.
Right. Okay.
That's the number that that we need to comply with for the state. Requirements.
The model units.
The model units, but the model units mean less to the average resident than the fact that. At full buildout. These four would add nine hundred and ninety-four units.
Yeah, and I think it's.
Paper, paper.
I think it's important that that residents understand that. Nine hundred and ninety-four potential units is literally if everyone who had a single family and a two family. Redeveloped.
It's a paper.
Happened over a very long time period.
It's a paper number. We understand that. But. It's it's a potential, but it's just that that middle, you know, and I understand it's maybe a presentation issue. But what we need to focus is on the potential new units because it's. The two thousand twenty, twenty-two hundred seventy number that we're trying to to achieve on paper.
But the nine ninety-four though also ignores the reality that again. I would say the majority of existing dwellings. Within the R five. Are nonconforming, existing nonconforming lots. And so as such. Regardless of what we do here, it's it's not a by right use. They still have to, because it's a nonconforming building, they still have to go through the ZBA process. So the nine ninety-four is actually in terms of by right use, a a dramatic. Overestimation of what gets built there. And particularly when you when you, since you're mixing in. Four thousand square foot lots, which are probably have even greater conformity issues, existing conformity issues. With the building and with with parking kind of thing. And again, I I think and. Not to, uh, I know I've. Killed a lot of horses in in our last meetings, but I don't see, aside from the exercise. To barely bring us over the state required minimum twenty-two seventy. I don't see the value in this to the city. In terms of actually creating opportunity for. People who who want to create a three family home go from one to three or two to three. In the existing R five district, we're we're disallowing. Essentially over half of R five from from doing that. And we're including units, a potential units and and. Parcels that we know. Won't be able to do act under this because of their existing nonconformity. And again, I think it's more equitable. Uh, and actually going back to the meeting with P and D last week. Uh, the ward councillor for Ward two, uh, which includes all of those R five. That specifically, his his. Feeling that would be most equitable to simply flip the switch and and R five. Allows three family by right if you are a conforming lot. In existence today. Uh, so again, I I think. Trying to do this exercise to limit the number is actually creating. More inequity for the neighborhood. And even though folks say we don't want it all put down on. Downtown, we want to extend it out. I don't think they were saying. Pick Beacon Street over here, but not Prospect Street over there. They were saying, try to be a little more creative. And spread some of this density requirements over and above what we're going to take down here elsewhere in the city.
So I I think doing the full R five is certainly an option. It's easy to do it. Um, there's pros and cons to it and we should have that conversation. Well, why don't we move forward so we can understand this option? And then in the next meeting, we can kind of weigh pros and cons and make that decision.
Well, I guess that's what I'm asking. What what is the pro of doing this scenario? That's that's not what I'm seeing.
Yeah, well, the the pro is is that first, um, we're applying a principle of walk time to uh the the train station. Um, following the spirit of the law of smart growth and being located next to transit and amenities. Um, we're avoiding flood plain in the historical areas. And we, as I understand it, are are actually. Taking away conflict, future conflicts of someone being in a three A zone. But then saying they can't use the by right process because their lots nonconforming. We are avoiding as much nonconforming lots as possible. So that if you're in the three A zone, more likely than not, you're gonna, you know, be able to use the by right process.
If your current building's conforming.
And I guess the other key one is, you know, and this is for the city council to decide. Do they want to zone beyond the capacity? And I think that was the other part of the past scenario is if we included everything that was discussed, you know, we were at a capacity of. You know, thousands and thousands of units and that and I think we came. Maybe we came to some conclusions about there might be better tools for some some of those areas. Um, but for this one, I mean, it's it's something, it's something we can look at. I mean, I also, I've I've heard from councillors saying. Don't do all the R five.
I have heard that as well.
So I'm I'm, I think that's that's where it was like, okay, well, let's. Let's really take a look at, is there, is there a scenario that has? Again, a little bit of some of the other things that have been discussed. It's not leaps and bounds there, but there are some very predictable districts in this. That that could potentially result in. Things that have been talked about and also kind of responding to that as well. Are we using the state's guidelines and their numbers? To try to come into compliance or are we? Are we doing something much broader? So that. That vacillation of back and forth of of whether it's all of our five or some of our five. I mean, is what this what this addresses.
Right. But the numbers are just pretty broad based. Guidelines for us to approach it with. Our other option was to stick everything in fifty acres. We could approach it that way. But we didn't because we want to, we don't want to see high rise buildings. So we we didn't approach it that way. But again. I think we're we're. By being selective about where we place it in R five. We're. Creating that that same disparity in treatment that we tried to address. Earlier when we were doing the the zoning amendments by by equalizing how the two family by right. How was treated? And we didn't, we didn't succeed at that. But we're creating our uh another situation here. And again. I live downtown. I I walk downtown. I walk up to Market Basket. It's it's all walkable and I I don't see. The legitimate. Reason to exclude, say, um, Trask Trask Street. Which is just as close. The railroad avenue, the railroad station as the opposite side of Middle Street going down to the waterfront. That it is, it just seems. Arbitrary with the only reason behind it. Being limiting those, the unit capacity. As opposed to creating zoning that. That is uh equitable. For everyone who lives downtown in the R five district.
So again, we gotta have that conversation while we have limited time. Let's get through this so we understand what the other option is. And then let's debate, you know, what what the best way to go forward is after we understand that.
Can I make one? I I I understand that there's just a a real serious issue here because we're real into a political wall that says. The people who live in this area do not all want to. I mean, we have to, we have to be cognizant of that. But. In the future, if in fact, this is a successful way and people see some spot increase and and and. Comfort with it, other areas of Ward two and three can go to their. Council member and say, you know, we want to be included in that overlay and the overlay can be expanded. After the fact, this is not necessarily drop dead, nothing will change after it. So that does. Create to me a little bit of a safety valve that maybe allow us to get through what we have to do for three A. And hopefully begin to continue to have a conversation with. Our residents about the benefits of this and and build on in the future. Just want to put a good point.
All right. So let's, that's good. Let's put a pin in that. We're gonna return to that.
Next slide, please.
Yeah, parking lot.
So just a little bit more. Um, so here we're looking at West Gloucester. Um, I I know there's a lot going on on the map. I think that just. Helps to illustrate the amount of environmental challenges, environmentally sensitive land or restricted land. That we have, which is all in the green and then in that sort of red hatched area. So in looking at that and trying to find some. some parcels and some areas that are close to the train station and also out of all the floodplain and the excluded land that we have, we sort of settled on kind of Lyndale Avenue, Essex Avenue and parcels that are sort of on it or a block or so around. Here, in order to get the density up a little bit and just create what I would consider to be a reasonable amount of units and respond to what we've been hearing about spreading some of those units out in West Gloucester, we needed to test a little bit different zoning parameter in that we used an eight thousand square foot lot minimum instead of a, what this is now, I think, a ten or a twenty thousand square foot minimum in this area. But again, even at an eight, you can see the parcels that are in kind of that pinkish color there in the district are not are not conforming. They're below eight thousand square feet. All the ones that are again in that yellowish color are over the eight thousand square foot minimum. There's fifty-two, if you bear with this chart, again, there's fifty-two existing residential units on those parcels. The modeled capacity is ninety-three, so that's what we would use for the compliance model. The net new would be fifty-four. Or the potential, the potential new units would be fifty-four.
Just add that this area was also chosen for West Gloucester because it's connected to sewer.
By the area that is north of one thirty-three is that goes up by like Woodward Avenue north up in there, why that was not considered.
We, I think when we looked at it, stuff on Woodward Ave and then up into like where it says Pew Avenue, there were a lot more very undersized parcels up that way. We may have to go five thousand square feet or even lower to try to bring those parcels in, which again impacts the density numbers.
Woodward Ave is also, it it's showing floodplain, but it's also riverfront area. So there's a lot of restriction from Conservation Commission's perspective. Some of these roads up in this area are very you've seen some of those in.
And they're they're topography, a lot of topography challenges. It's really not suitable, I think. And in a way, this is just throwing it in in order for the equity issue that we're addressing both stations to a certain degree.
I think, I think specifically people said, you know, have you looked at the West Gloucester Station? And and that's, you know, again, the initial, the initial run at this because there's so much area that's excluded. But there is this this kind of ribbon and it is, it is right proximate to the train station.
And it's, if we're gonna say politically we need to show the balance, we can argue it's the optimal of what is available.
What about the Kent Road area? What is, what is up in there?
Just like one corner up there, and it's the floodplains as well. But I think the contiguity was also kind of rough up there.
What size are the lots that are pink? Are they, what, they're under eight thousand? Are they over five thousand?
Some of them probably are. I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head. Probably some of them are.
I think at the last presentation that she said that most of them were between six and eight thousand square feet, so six. Lower number.
Okay, that district looks great.
Then here's just a, you know, I'm sure you've seen an iteration of this table a million times, but I think what's most important to focus on is the column all the way to the right for our totals. Because this is adding all those districts together and and in the case of density doing the average. So we have more, you know, we have plenty of acreage, a hundred and sixty-three acres, we need fifty. But again, we need that acreage to get the units and to get the density and to be sort of spreading things around. The final unit capacity, we're at two thousand four hundred and forty-six, we need two thousand two hundred and seventy, and then we need fifteen units an acre and you can see we are. That's my main take.
Is that typical to be barely there with the density? Or usually it's easier?
You mean with other communities?
Yeah.
Really just depends what their goals are and sort of what areas they're zoning. It it really depends. Some, some try to hit fifteen on the head. Fifteen to sixteen. We've worked in some communities where we're maybe up in the twenties. And it just, it just kind of depends on what districts they're targeting.
Yeah, okay.
Fifteen units per acre is already on the books for our.
Yep.
Higher too.
I know.
I thought, I thought it would just be important to talk about how this scenario aim about and how it responds to things that were heard throughout this planning process, engaging with the community, engaging with your board and the city council. So as you can see from the chart that Eric just showed, this really closely aligns with what the state asked Gloucester to do, which was to model for around twenty-two hundred units at fifteen units per acre. So it is most in line with what the state requires. We heard from lots of folks, including councillors, that you know, in meeting this requirement, downtown should not bear all of the burden. So by including a district on the West Gloucester Station area, we are spreading it out a little bit, but doing it based on smart growth principles. That's where the other transit stop is. That's where you can walk to it. And that's where we're avoiding constraints like floodplains and wanting to stay out of the historic district, which is something we heard a lot as well from the public. We also heard that this is an opportunity to create deed restricted affordable housing, that this shouldn't just be a useless exercise and that we should use it to actually impact the housing situation here in Gloucester, which is a dire one as it is across all greater Boston. So we have a sub-district that would help the Gloucester Housing Authority improve and upgrade its units, potentially getting more affordable units, higher quality units in that area, working with that partner. And then another sub-district that would allow for a development at a higher density that would actually trigger inclusionary zoning and produce affordable units. So this scenario was created in a way that responds to a lot of what we heard from the public as well as each of the boards.
Are you including all of the G H A properties or just?
Maybe, because it's it's walkable to this train station.
And in initial discussions with David, that's the, that's the one that they're folk, they're doing some other evaluation of of Riverdale Park, but that's the one that they're they're starting to look a little bit closer at.
Want responses or discussion?
So I mean, I think at this point, it would be good to just to discuss this scenario. We need to get close to really honing in on something because pretty soon we're gonna need to make that recommendation to the city council in order to stay on track with our timeline, our deadline. I don't need to remind you all, but our state grants, including the Housing Choice Grant, that really is the Gloucester recently was gained access to because of its housing production and housing best practices. If we don't comply, we're gonna lose that. And that's how you really support real affordable housing. So you know, there's a lot at stake. We want to make sure we're on that timeline.
Sorry.
If we did all of our five plus West Gloucester, that gives us overcapacity.
It'd be about double what you're required to do. And I do think that that would be politically challenging to pass.
Yeah, I completely agree that we should not do all of our five. However, because we really only heard from that one city councillor and I've heard from plenty of other city councillors since then that they don't agree with that particular position. But I do think that the R five that we are showing could be more equitable. Because that was the whole point of doing the walk shed was to not make it seem arbitrary, but have some type of principle behind it. And I'm afraid going heavy on Centennial Ave looks unbalanced and not have a principle behind it.
I think that creating four thousand square foot lots is more politically difficult than spreading zoning change throughout all of our five.
We're not creating four thousand square foot lots. Don't say, don't say those words.
We're making them compliant in the district.
Right, but we're not creating any four thousand square foot lots, and particularly we're not creating any new four thousand square foot lots.
Right, we're not creating any new. We're we're making currently non-compliant lots compliant, not requiring them to go through the Z P A process while we're telling other folks who live in R five, who have lots of five thousand square foot or greater, that they are still remaining in the Z P A process. And I don't know how you can slice up downtown area and randomly and say that that's equitable treatment for everyone who lives in R five. Equitable treatment would be saying that if you are on a compliant lot in the existing compliance structure, you can build a three-family. Anything else is not equitable or fair.
Brought to a hard place here.
What do other folks think about the equitable equity, equitableness of R five?
I guess my opinion is that, you know, the, you know, all of downtown, three-family by right, it's just way over the number, but it also has the specter of, you know, increased traffic, increased parking, more people and everything that we've been talking about and everybody's been pushing against is making the downtown crowded, right? And so if you make it all by right and and forget about conformity or non-conformity or, you know, all of that, yes, that's equitable for everybody that's downtown, right? But then it creates a path for a much higher potential capacity, you know, that everybody is afraid of.
But again, I think our job is to explain to folks that those those fears they have that we're gonna be suddenly overrun with new development are unfounded based on the reality of what's on the ground. Because again, I I don't know if you've run the scenarios, but my bet from earlier studies that we've done, something like forty-five percent of of lots downtown are are not compliant, right? And that doesn't, actually, that's just the lot size. That doesn't include the current existing structure on it, which for the most part throughout all of R five, the downtown area are most likely non-compliant also. So the the reality of by right development in this scenario, even if we blanket all of R five with this, is a miniscule amount of by right projects going through the pipeline. The vast majority of lots within R five will have to still go through the Z P A process. And if we do this by stipulating what you've recommended is two spaces per unit and even lower existing parcels, we'll be able to exercise a by right use. I think the notion that we're supposed to be scared of the higher capacity units, or the higher theoretical capacity, just because the numbers multiply out that way, ignores the reality on the ground, that very tiny percentage, even if everyone who wanted to exercise the right, chose to exercise the right, a very tiny percentage of that capacity number is actually going to be able to exercise by right development in R five. It's just, it's not the reality on the ground. And I I don't think we should be fearful of the high number. I think we should explain to folks that the high number is essentially a pipe dream. That it's just a number on the paper and the reality on the ground is completely different.
Can we hear from other board members though, Sean, about what they think about this equity issue? As I, I really do understand your point and I get it, but I want to know what other people think.
So to to finish my thought is that R five throughout the district by right in people's minds, simple, you know, look at it for what it is. That means they're gonna have four thousand potential uses or new dwelling units within that district within three A. You know, to Sean's point, the scenario that we're talking about here where we're picking districts, guy across the street has to go to the Z P A. I don't have to, right? The compelling story is that if I have to go to the Z P A and I want to do a three-family on my two-family that's not in the district of three A, you want to do it. There's an outlet for Sean, right? I mean, and if it doesn't make sense not, you know, to write a check for whatever it costs to go to the Z P A, it doesn't make sense, right? So it's not as though you're precluding a district, you know, of of relief from zoning. And I I think you would have a compelling argument. The guy across the street can do it. I can't. I gotta go to the Z P A to get a stamp to put, you know, an apartment in my attic? Are you gonna say no?
We're, we're creating that hurdle for some of you doing.
There's plenty of hurdles, Sean, believe me. And I, and I get it. But the thing is that, you know, everything that we've heard, don't do everything downtown. Distribute it, be equitable about it. We're not precluding anybody from doing anything. And if you want to do it, there's always a path. You can seek that relief. And I don't know that that's a, that's a bad thing.
But we're still doing predominantly, the vast majority of it downtown, we're we're just trying to limit that number to say we didn't, we didn't put everything down here. We've got, what, I don't know what the number was, ninety potential units over in West Gloucester. Roughly twenty-four hundred downtown. And again, that that is just essentially playing to the 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 fear that those twenty-four hundred units are gonna come into existence when we know the fact is they they are. Again, we're probably, if we blanket downtown with with the three-family by right, maybe we get in the next five or ten years, fifty to a hundred conversions, maybe, based on past. And we've, we've got two-family by right now. And look how many three families, or how many single families we still have in the district. People aren't doing it. They're not gonna do three-family either.
That doesn't take into a lot of all the things that we've talked about already, you know, distribution, the floodplain, historic districts. I mean, there's a lot of technical planning around, you know, these sub-districts within the thing that we have to comply with, which is a half mile around the railroad that, you know, station. And I don't know.
But we can include all those same restrictions. Preventing somebody who's in the floodplain, who happens to be in R five, exclude those, those folks. Exclude those folks that are in in the historic district. We can maintain those same very reasonable restrictions, but not say that for whatever reason, Trask Street isn't walkable to the train station when when it actually is.
And Beverly, Sean, with all due respect, I feel like we really understand your position and arguing about it with Rick isn't gonna move the conversation along. And I really do want to hear from Doug and Beverly and David and and Hank about what they think about this. I mean, I think we're in agreement about most things, but it's coming down to how much of R five, the whole thing or not the whole thing. And if it's not the whole thing, where in R five? Right? So what 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 do our other planning board colleagues feel about this?
I'd like to see a plan that actually showed, that more or less illustrates what Sean is talking about, which is if it was all of R five, just the number of lots that that applies to. Now, you may already have shown that to us, but I I do have concerns about the inequity issue of if you create a little sub-district that the person next door is outside of that district, what the the inequity that's involved there. Rick says you can, you still have a a mechanism for dealing with that by going before the Z P A. But I think it's creating an inequity by doing that. So I'm more along the lines of Sean's position with this, and I would definitely like to see how you're doing there. And the the parcel across the street included, one that that Deb Ellis was trying to get included for for parking, because I think that would be a good use. To me, to me, the West Gloucester illustration just almost seems like a sop, that it's just, it's just addressing West Gloucester, but it's not really, it it's, it's not really providing much. So if anything, I would, I would want to see that somewhat expanded. So the it, the concern that I've got is or the question that I've got for this group is, if we are over capacity in terms of this zone of allowing multifamily housing on lots, is that a problem or not? I don't think that it is if we allow more than the 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 twenty-two hundred or the twenty-three hundred units. But that's my own feeling. I'd be interested in.
It kind of comes down to what the, what's gonna pass in the city.
Kind of comes down to what the, what's going to pass in the city, you know, for the city, I mean, whether or not the city complies. So it's like, what, what have we proposed that's going to work for that equation? If we propose something that's too, what people perceive as being too broad and too large, then they're going to scream, no, 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 you know? So I think that's what Rick's talking about. So we have to do something that's going to, you know, be reasonable within what the state's looking for, yet not, you know, is being a little bit conservative towards, you know, how we're doing it. I think it might be an easier sell versus something more, more robust. I think that's kind of the problem.
I concur.
Don't forget it.
I concur with that comment, that I, I do believe that we have to just be realistic about what will, what will sell to the, to the people who are voting. That's the most important thing at this stage, because we got to move along, get something on the, out there that, that will meet the specs that we're looking for and, and people will not be highly objecting to. I agree, Doug.
And can you look, can you look at that scenario that you're proposing and expand it a little bit more to kind of create less inequity?
That's where I'm seeing the, the commonality between these comments is that there is a choice between the full R5 and something that's dialed in, but we'd like to see that dialed in option more closely follow walk, walkability and smart growth principles, and we'd like to see another variation of that. Does that reflect what, what you are, are thinking?
Yes, that reflects what I'm thinking.
I think we're getting closer because the idea when we started with this, we started with the big three ideas that were really tests to elicit, and out of that came a conclusion, at least on my part, I, I think with Jane as well, and others of you here on the board, that there was a hybrid that met the requirements, that dealt with some of the political issues in terms of the different kind of equity, which is to spread the pain, although I don't happen to think there's pain, I think there's opportunity. But then, you know, we have a political environment in which a number of residents do feel that it's being, they're being imposed upon, and we have to be really open about the, about the, um, uh, political and about the time. We, we really are on a schedule and we're within a month of having, or two weeks or whatever, of having something to move forward with. One concern about the 4,000 square foot lot option, uh, modality, which is to choose the area where you can drop to 4,000, is if you don't have development standards that suit most 4,000, then you're counting them and they're just paper counts, because for example, the six parking spaces, and more, I think about it, it should be one per unit, not two per unit, and we've already gone on record in saying in the meetings, they'll be two for rec. But on a 4,000 square foot lot, three, a three-unit building is not going to be very big to begin with, and to then require six on-site parking spaces probably is a deal breaker. And so it's the same issue of you include it to make the numbers work, but in reality, it doesn't work. The advantage of going back to 5,000 conforming lots is that at least we know that if we establish some reasonable setback height and parking standards, that more of those lots will be eligible. But that is then the issue of it is a bigger area on the map if it's not necessarily a larger number of, of development units. So I'm thinking two things. One is either a slight variation in this option that kind of looks at the couple of issues that were raised, or this issue plus the full R5 that meets yours and maybe, and, and have, and, and see at city council, which one is beginning to feel better? I don't know. I just know that we have got to come to a decision, we have a schedule, and we can't afford to lose and not, not comply. Now, there's another issue, and that is some of these things can be handled now, they've been identified outside this process next year when we have lots of time. Railroad is one of them. The East Gloucester Shaw side is a really superb redevelopment site, doesn't have to be here, doesn't even qualify to be here. So we don't have to break our pick and, and make, and make this bucket fill all of our needs. I think we just have to find the best possible solution technically, legally, and politically, and get on with it.
Thanks, Beverly.
I asked, Jane, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
She's the best person on the room.
Can you see what this looks like? It's great. It's like...
I know. Hi. Good thing I washed my hair today, geez.
I get a couple of questions. So the, the West Gloucester area, and that's, that's something for you to consider, it, it draws down the density because it's, it's a small district and it doesn't have a lot of yield. It's, it's not required in this, in this scenario. So that's, that's a question, I think it was asked for it to be explored. We've said for months at this point that there's not a lot in that station area. So, I mean, that's, that would be helpful. Do you want to see that in, in the next scenario, or do you want to exclude it? It, it doesn't have a lot of capacity, it doesn't have a lot of potential for new units.
Well, use that criteria that you've selected, it doesn't.
It doesn't, it doesn't get much better if you drop down to six. I mean, it, it's going to be, it's going to be 100 units or less. It's, it was never a large district unless you go, you know, pretty far down, and that's, and that's where, again, so it's, we knew that there wasn't a lot there, but it, it addressed the issue of, have you looked at both station areas? You guys are making the recommendations, so just to know, do we keep, keep it along? Do you want to see it go down in, in minimum requirement? It's only going to bring it up by tens of units of potential, and again, it's to Sean's point, if there's a lot of single family in that area, who knows, people may never exercise it. That's one question.
Yeah, I want to see it included, Greg, because why not? And because we were asked to include it.
Okay, so politically, I think that's the question. I don't know if Jane makes the decision, but...
No, I don't make the decisions, I'm just stating my opinion.
Yes.
It's politically palatable.
The West Gloucester thing is a red earring. I mean, you know...
It is, and that's okay.
I mean, you know, share what? What are we sharing? What kind of a burden are we sharing that these people are worried about? I don't understand it.
Why we're acknowledging the, you know, the input that we're getting, right? And doing it to the best of we can.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter, I mean, at the end of the day, it never happens, we considered it, spent time and energy on it, right? And so thank you for doing the work for that, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
And if you think that you can do a better job, you know, Mr., you know, West Gloucester, a city councillor, go and show me a better solution, but you know, on the time and the course of work.
Yeah, I think so.
Just include it.
That's, that's one.
And it's 50 of 200, 2,270, it's, it's...
Well, it's, it's about 100. It's 100 because that's the model capacity.
All right.
But important to demonstrate that you've done it.
Yeah.
If there's 6,000 square foot lots there, if, if, I would say, saying that a 4,000 square foot parcel downtown can easily take a three-family home than a 6,000 square foot parcel on Essex Avenue can take a three-family.
We can show it, it's easy enough to do. Next question. The reason why Eric said over and over again, we modeled it based on two spaces per unit, is basically to see if it breaks the model.
Okay.
So the current zoning in R5 is one space per unit.
Right.
So that would be a recommendation from the board in terms of, when we get to the actual language of design standards, whether you keep it at one, whether you move it up to one and a half, two was just to see if it breaks the model.
And doesn't break the model?
It does not break the model.
At 4,000?
No, no.
All right, thank you.
So, but that's, that's something for you to propose?
Okay.
At the city council level, they can pick and choose. They could say two, and at least we would be able to tell them it doesn't break the model. The application would not be rejected when it's submitted to the state.
So my art, my question about throwing 4,000 in, but having them then throw them back out because they, they're not developable, the model says they are, so we can rely technically on that solution, whether it's politically palatable or not, at least it's technically. Okay. That's helpful, thank you.
Yep.
And at the city council level, they might throw out 4,000 square foot, and they might throw out West Gloucester train station, but at least we can propose it.
And then the option is to say, well, we've got all this other R5, it's walkable to the main station and has mixed use, and let's go for it. Let's modify and bring more in, and then, then we're dealing with, with Sean's concerns. So in a way, we can use it to test the waters.
Well, I think that's the other thing that we'll have to be very clear when this is presented, is what does break the model? Because if, and, and that, that's an education piece that we have to carry forward, district boundaries, these are the metrics, and if that's part of the scenario, there's some things you just can't change based on how the model evaluates the... So I guess the other, other question is if we're kind of trying to go back to look at a larger area, you don't want to draw lines, but are there some principles in any of this? Does it make sense to try to evaluate R5 within the half-mile? You're, if you're over at East Gloucester School, walking to the train station, that's probably, how far is that? Probably 15, 20 minutes? I'm just asking, you know, again, we looked at 10 minutes and it's almost coincident with, with the half-mile, that's part of the principle. If you're asking to expand, and you, you mentioned that, Jane, like, how, how much of a bigger district are you talking about, or is there, is there something, something in between what we've presented and the full R5?
Yeah, well, I'm just, what I'm really saying is that if you're using the 10-minute walk shed as your principle, it seems heavily weighted towards Centennial Ave is all.
Yep, and that's, that's because of the lot distribution as well, but...
The walk shed itself that you presented, did that satisfy the number of units?
I mean, so if we took everything...
Within the 10-minute walk.
Oh, yes, that's, that's...
It'd probably be...
So it's not all of the circle, it's not all of the circle, it's not all of R5.
Yeah, but it's a lot of it, yes.
Yeah, I mean, look at it right now, we're a subset of that.
So.
Mostly in, in the, you know, the western band of the 10-minute walk.
But to Beverly's point, I think it's much easier for the city council to, to chip away and take things away than it is when they get into their process of adding more in, right?
So I would say it's equally difficult, because any changes to the boundary or to the zoning parameters, we can't model that on the fly.
But I just mean, you have presented us tonight, you, you modeled, and, and that peaks us over the, the threshold for the number. If you presented a scenario that, again, tried to treat R5 equitably, everyone in R5 equitably, and modeled the vast majority of R5 at least, if not all of it, then you still have that existing model that you've presented tonight that shows all this other stuff you can whack away until you get down to this, and this is essentially the minimum what you can go forward, that it provides the councillors some guidance in terms of... Again, this is an equitable model, we're treating everyone in R5 the greatest degree possible equally, and here, but here's sort of the minimum scenario, you, you can't fall below in order to meet clients.
That, that implies you need the city council, you know, the, the, the time and opportunity to create a district, which they don't.
Yeah, Sean, the other problem with that is we're not just proposing maps to the city council, we, next week, or like literally in seven days, we have to start drafting the language for this, and it would look very different if we were doing all of R5 versus if we were doing some districts in R5.
I, I think the simplest solution to this discussion is to get a yield on three-family by right in the R5 district and know what that number is. So let's just say for giggles that it's 4,000 units, or 3,500 units, right? We need to generate 2275. The suggestion is to be equitable to create capacity for 3,500. Okay, city council, if you want to do all R5, be equitable, that's fine, here's what the potential is, and I don't know that you have a saleable product.
I mean, we did that, and I think it was like 5,100.
Okay, so maybe double, more than double what the scenario, you know, the requirement is. And so if you want to talk about simple people that are going to look at a packet for five minutes and say, we can do 5,100 units, or we can do 2,400 units, you tell me, city council, what you think about it.
You should give them the choice.
But that's what we're talking about, Sean.
Right. We all know that, that whether it's 5,100 or whatever it is, that it's not even probably 2% of that.
Yeah, but it's not for us to decide, right? It's the homeowners that want to spend that $200,000 to create a thousand-foot apartment that they won't ever get their money back from.
Right, but we're telling, in this, in the small scenario, we're telling these people, you can do this, telling the other people, we've got another, another set of hurdles to go across it.
I'd like to see that number, that 5,100 number, whatever that is, right?
The problem is if we can't hone one, our job is to hone this down for the city council, to do the really heavy lifting in terms of the technical analysis here, to hear what the political environment tells us to respond to it, but by and large, come up with our best possible recommendation. And if we go in with two, then we essentially, not only is it a time loser, but we're asking the city council to make it base pretty much on political, because they don't have the benefit of the impact. So we do our job, or we don't do our job. And the question is, what is the best possible option, given all of the pros and cons, put our best foot forward, is kind of where I'm leaning. Now, whether we mess a little bit with that, with the downtown district and move it about, but if everything is 5,100, that just doesn't seem to make much sense, Sean, I know, equity is an issue here, but we just, we can't achieve equity and have a politically acceptable option. It just, we're just going to have to pick some winners and losers, and, and always with the opportunity later, that other districts of this downtown says this is a boon, Mr. Ward, Mr. Ward councillor, you get us in that overlay, and in 2025, we get in the overlay. I mean, it's, isn't like it's dead on arrival as of the end of 2024. I just think we have to come down on a solution quickly, and we have to vote on it.
I think the other political consideration, based on my conversations with several councillors, is they don't want to present it, be presented with a scenario where it's vote for this or, or we're losing our grants. They, they want some leeway, they want some flexibility to be able to respond to their constituents and say, we heard you, and we made adjustments in this. If we present something that was presented tonight is essentially a minimum plan with very little leeway, we're just over the amount required, and as people keep saying, there's not going to be a lot of time for folks to, for them to actually do the work, to add it in. If they say, if, say, somebody does say, I'm on Prospect Street, I don't want to be in it, take that out, and so the council responds to that, and there's very little leeway that, that the council has to rebuild that capacity.
Why don't we go in somewhere in the middle and, and like expand a little bit, like we talked about, expand a little bit more than R5, so gets a little bit more towards what Sean's looking for, you know, something a little bit in between, you know?
Do you think it could be reconciled more with the walk shed, as a lot of folks have pointed out?
But a 10-minute walk. Can you say that again?
I, I think it could be reconciled with the walk shed.
Yeah.
More effectively, and, and it seems like there is a common interest in doing that among this group.
Well, if Doug is correct, and we go in with something a little bit more, and then the city council has something to, has some leeway to chip away at to get it back to 2270, maybe that's a, maybe that's a, an acceptable way compromise. And by the way, in terms of walk shed, five-minute walk and a 10-minute walk is barely differential. I mean, most people who take transit accept a 10-minute walk, I mean, so, there, I mean...
I'm in favor of a 10-minute.
But a 10-minute isn't...
Again, Jane?
I'm in favor of a 10-minute walk zone, and it's very much like a circle, it fits inside the circle around the station, you know, the boundary of the 3A zone around the station, and it's as equitable as we can make it, without making it all of R5.
And again, I just want to reiterate, right? So every pushback that I've heard is we can't handle the sewer, we can't handle the wire, we don't have police, we don't have fire, you know, the more units that are getting created, our school systems will be overrun, right? Right, I mean, so the, you know, the more solution, it becomes very quickly less palatable, and I don't know how, you know, exceeding, I mean, so, you know, we can talk about housing production at another time, right? And to, to Beverly's point, if somebody's across the street on Trask, I want to be in that 3A district, well, and you can go to the ZBA tomorrow if you like, or you can appeal to your council and to the planning board to rezone or include you in, you know, uh, an expansion of that, you know, at, at a later date. But I'm, I'm of the opinion that things don't... But I'm, I'm of the opinion that things don't happen for five or 10 years. That's already been mentioned here tonight. But more just fans, you know, the flames of everything that you've talked about against these people for a year that, you know, more is not necessarily better or equitable, right? I mean, if you call up one particular former councillor and say, yeah, we're going to put in fifty-one hundred units, she would just get on a rocket ship and leave the country, right? Overnight. And so I don't know how that's a solution and I don't want to really give the council an opportunity to say, well, thank you for doing all this work for the last whatever, but we're going to do this, this and this instead. Make that work and back to me in fifteen minutes, right? It's not there. I mean, this is a planning board thing. We're doing the heavy lifting. Here's two scenarios and that's what you got to work on, right? And that's, and by the way, go do your job, right? City council.
Yeah, but overloading the schools is a little ridiculous when one looks at the reality of the whole thing. We should be lucky enough, you gotta have affordable housing for people that are going to have kids from school. And if you don't have it, there's no way that your schools are going to get.
But I'm saying if this, if we have more than double what's required under three A, I don't know how you sell that to anybody in this.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that.
As a plain, simple statement, wrap your brain around.
It's got to be.
I think you explained that that's not the reality of what gets built.
Yeah, but you can't say that, Sean.
People aren't hearing that. People aren't hearing it, Sean.
I can guarantee you that twenty-two hundred units will never be built under three A.
That's, I can guarantee that too. Yeah.
I, I think you got it right, Rick.
Right.
So can we, uh?
You guys, yeah, I don't think any new points are being made here.
Well, I just wanted like, let's recap. So everybody's comfortable with every district that's been proposed, other than some potential modification to the R five. And if, and, and we will, we will look at that. I mean, again, this was a, this was a cut. There was, there was, there was a lot of, you know, looking very carefully at the entire district to come up with what RKG came up with. Um, we can take another run at that. Um, if that were the case, are you comfortable with us starting to try to describe these districts? With what the standards would be, would be, I think that's an important one. There's parking, there's height, there's, there's a lot of things that have to go into this. Um, so we'll, we'll leave, we'll basically say we're, we're getting close, I think.
Yes.
We've got closer with, closer with, um, is there any modification to West Gloucester? Yes, no?
No.
Dropping the state, sorry, the, the lot area, okay?
It's fine.
And then we'll come back with a little bit of refinement, a, a crack at, at basically what we've heard of this.
Does the Halyard include the parcel across the, it does?
It does.
That's, that's a. It's a modification, yeah.
Yep.
It has to pass like this.
I mean, we could also do it because it, it does not, the unit count from that does not affect the, the compliance.
They say, no, it doesn't hurt us.
Then we can still do it anyway.
Yes.
So.
It's a good spot for.
Right, okay. So we can do it outside. So we put it in because it's a cheap date, but we can also do it separate.
You love that one, don't you?
I cheap date is my favorite word. That's why you take it.
Don't, don't build a parking lot where we can put housing.
So, um, turnaround time. Do we feel like we need another meeting next week? Hold off until.
I think so, Greg. I think we have to agree on something before we can start drafting. So, and if we don't do, if we don't meet next week, I mean.
I would, I would say principally, other than, there's, there's things that we can be working on based on, on, on the, on the type of districts that we've described and the density requirements for them. Um, I think it's just the R five that we'll hold off on.
Okay.
If you guys think you want to meet in.
I think it's a question of how, are you able to present something more in a week?
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, we're supposed to, we're supposed to recommend draft language to the city council on our August eighth meeting. So can we get there if we don't have another?
I think, I think we could meet next, next week.
Meet next week. Erica, make it work and let's, you know.
Now that we know how to use the equipment in here, it'll be a lot easier.
Eric, interesting.
Yeah, I'll have to double check. Actually, next. ZBA will be downstairs.
Oh, downstairs? Yeah.
Yeah, the only thing we're also going to have to figure out is climate control. Am I the only one that's really?
AC is not on. It's.
Okay. Maybe it's that.
Greg, is there any merit to us receiving the proposed districts in our, you know, in the, in the planning board file?
Oh, absolutely. Well, we'll, we'll share. Yeah, we'll share this presentation in, in the, in the file and we'll post it as well.
No, I mean, the, um, if you're going to propose a new R five, you're going to move around R five.
Yeah.
Wouldn't it be good to see it before we get there so we can formulate our thoughts and waste less time?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Lot, it took a lot to get where we are here today at this time.
I know. I'm not, I'm not criticizing that at all.
No, 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 I understand. If we had it available sooner, we would have, we would have provided it. But we can, we can try to get something in advance.
Okay.
And it will be the only thing on the agenda. So we can, we can, uh, do you want to say five o'clock next week?
What do you want us to do if?
Um, I will see if this room is available and if, and if there aren't rooms available, then we'll do a remote meeting. I mean, it is, it is very visual, so I think that, that's worked as well.
But if one of us, if we have, if one of us.
Yes, you always have the option. Yes. So it will either be hybrid or fully remote.
All right, we have some other things on the agenda that we need to.
Oh, minutes.
Minutes. Do minutes later.
Yeah, I, I vote for doing minutes later.
Oh, that is not fair to Catherine. She gets paid to do.
All right, okay.
Yeah, three, two, don't we?
I read them. They were very good.
I think Sean's ready to make a motion.
Hey, wait.
I know, but I. Yes, I have, but I did have comments.
You put those up there? It's okay.
Start with the thirtieth?
May thirtieth.
Yeah.
Feels like a lifetime ago.
Yeah, so my first comment is the bullet at the bottom, which says August. Um, it says this exercise is geared towards gathering additions, new ideas, not making deletions. Did that mean decisions or that meant deletions? I wasn't even at that meeting. So that word should be deleted. Okay. And then wait, on August twenty-ninth, the consult, consultant team will make a presentation to the planning board? Is that a special meeting? Cause we don't have a meeting on August twenty-ninth.
That you all agreed to.
I wasn't there. What?
Oh, okay. Does that, you're away?
No, no, I wasn't at this meeting. Is there?
Oh, okay.
On the twenty-ninth?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Those are my two comments on that one.
Making motions.
Um, except, yeah, the twenty-ninth is a Monday. That's okay?
Oh, wait a minute. That's not correct then.
Oh, wait, no, sorry. That was July. Oh, no, it is Thursday, the twenty-ninth. Okay, no, it's all good. Okay, I move that we approve the planning board minutes of, oh, I can't do that because I wasn't there. Someone else do it.
I'll make the motion, please. I'll leave a second.
You have to save the date.
What, what's our date?
Motion approved, May thirtieth minutes made by Sean Henry, second.
Second.
Please.
Member Noonan.
Yes.
Member Cook.
Yes.
Member Henry.
Yes.
Member Rosen.
Yes.
Member Bookin.
Yeah.
Member McCarroll.
Yes.
Mentioned.
Yeah, she's not.
Abstain.
June sixth. To the twentieth, sets us up.
June sixth. June twentieth on page two.
June sixth, we're on, oh.
Oh. Never mind. I have no comments on June sixth.
Okay.
Any other comments on June sixth? You're now allowed to accept a motion, please.
I move that we approve the minutes of June sixth.
Second.
Motion by Jane Ramsen, seconded by David.
I'll, I'll vote please.
Member Noonan, yes.
Member Cook. Yes.
Member Henry.
Yes.
Member Rosen.
Yes.
Member Bookin.
Yes.
Member McCarroll.
Yes.
And member Ramsey.
Yes.
Hey.
Okay, so on June twentieth, um, second page, Dan Delulo shares his screen. And it says, he explains that the closest column, which will be cantilevered, surely the column is not cantilevered.
No, column would.
Can't, can't leave it over.
Oh, it's can't leave it over. Uh, no, the upper floor is cantilevered over the, the.
Yeah, so it just has to be fixed to say that the floor is cantilevered over the column. The column is not cantilevered.
Plenty is the closest column, comma, the building will be cantilevered and will.
Over which, oh, you're dismissing over, over which the building will be cantilevered. Yeah.
Any other comments for the move approval with the, with the correction?
No, no, I have one more comment at the end, um, under other business. Director Katamatory sums up, the majority of the board seems to be falling on the side of building a model that means simple compliance over bundling. I don't know that that was our consensus then. But I do think we said we were going to go to a subcommittee and discuss it more at that meeting, right?
Yeah, I don't know about the bundling.
Yeah, I just don't like that sentence at all. And didn't we refer it out to subcommittee? Then?
We might, we might have to go to the videotape on that one.
Okay.
Then you bring it back.
Yeah, let's, let's, we'll bring that, we'll bring that one step back.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Discussion ensues was a very nice turn of phrase.
Yes, at eight oh six.
Ignoring all those dead horses in the room.
I'm going to bring it on you tonight since we got through two of them. Any other business to be discussed that's unreasonably unforeseen?
No.
The honors. Want to make a motion, hang to withdraw?
I'll, I'll move for adjournment, Mr. German.
I second.
A motion and a second.
I'll, I'll go.
Member Noonan.
Yes.
Member Cook.
Yes.
Member Henry.
Yes.
Member Rosen.
Yes.
Member Bookin.
Yes.
Member McCarroll.
Yes.
And member Ramsey.
Yes, and also thank you very much to Eric for all the work I know you've been doing in the background. We really appreciate it a lot. And Alex, you too. It's been great. Well, and obviously Greg and also the other Eric, but. Mostly, I don't want to leave anyone out. Anyone out?
Our thanks.
No, mostly, mostly the RKG Eric. Thank you.
Jane, this will never happen again where you're on the big screen, just so you know.
You don't like it, Rick? It's not, it's not working out for you?
We'll get a bigger one.
All right. Thank you.
Night off.
Okay, bye.